Good Friday afternoon, guys. My name is Jerry Miller. Welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. It's good to be with you on a gorgeous day to be alive. We are live in Charlottesville, the Commonwealth, the country and the world on the I Love Seaville Network. We put this show on every social or digital platform possible, podcasts, iTunes, Spotify, Apple Podcasts, iTunes, whatever it may be, it's on there across all social media, on YouTube, in an e-newsletter that goes out to 140,000 inboxes each day, and of course, on iloveceville.com. A lot we're going to cover on today's show, we're going to highlight bicycle riding. And the reason we're going to do this is Keith Smith, my friend, the star of Real Talk Tuesdays and Fridays at 10:15 on the I Love Seaville Network, he had Sean Tevindale on the program. He's the owner of Blue Ridge Cyclory. And Sean blew me away with his thought-provoking commentary on the value proposition that is bicycle riding and how riding a bicycle can improve the Charlottesville and Central Virginia community. So we'll, we'll really get into that topic. We'll play you some of the highlights from Sean's interview on Real Talk. We'll discuss the Rivana Trail and how it could be utilized differently to encourage more bicycle riding, which in turn would get track of traffic off the road, which would help from a pollution standpoint, which would get everybody healthy and exercising and, and, and really considering quality of life. So a lot we're going to cover on the program, UVA Spring Semester. We have ideas of what the spring semester is going to look like at the University of Virginia. We'll cover that on the broadcast. We'll talk Henrico Schools returning to in-person classes and how that could influence the Commonwealth of Virginia and its school systems. Henrico going back and going back soon. We'll talk about that on the broadcast today. We're going to talk some college basketball. I'm excited that college basketball is right around the corner. We have a regular season that looks more normal than the football regular season. We'll highlight some of those storylines. And of course, we have a big time weekend of college football and pro football with the UVA football team traveling to Miami, with Virginia Tech going to Winston-Salem to face Wake Forest, and the Dallas Cowboys traveling to face the Washington Football Team. We'll give some love to Interstate Pest and Service Companies. Judah Whitkower is our director. Truly a home's best friend, Interstate Pest and Service Companies. If you guys could do me a favor of giving the show a like and a share anywhere across the board, that would mean quite a bit to us. You know, I was sent, the lead of the show is something that I didn't plan, and I think this is when you need to tag a friend and let them know what's going on in the community. I was sent today screenshots from the mayor's Facebook page by a number of people. And, and this is, in a lot of ways, how I woke up this morning. And the mayor of Charlottesville and I don't always see eye to eye. And one of the reasons we don't always, always see eye to eye is because of her decision-making, her policies, her policymaking, how she goes about interacting with people, and frankly, leading the community instead of galvanizing and creating solidarity and bringing us together. I often find her politics, commentary, and actions create a divide within Charlottesville. A good example of that is, and I reference this often, is her comments to the New York Times, the world's newspaper where she called Charlottesville "an ugly-to-the-soul kind of place." She's done other things that I've found just very concerning, including calling out Bellamy Brown, who was running for Charlottesville City Council at the time, and on her Facebook page where she called Mr. Brown, who I admire and have tremendous respect for on this program. In fact, I, in a lot of ways, I thought he was a clear-cut best choice for, for city council. And, and she called Mr. Brown "the worst kind of toxic S-H-I-T out there." And I'm not even going to use the profanity. Toxic S-H-I-T, she said. Well, today I woke up and a number of people had sent me a screenshot from her Facebook page. Judah, why don't you get up the screenshot of her Facebook page where she goes on, she offers her commentary? I'm going to, I'm going to be very respectful here in my thoughts and analysis on what happened today. So look at the screen, look at the screen. It's up on screen now. Look at the screen. The, the one that is particularly about me is in the fourth, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph where the mayor of Charlottesville says, "White, white men who would use their privilege to stone me at the Freedom Wall if it were legal. One loves Seaville so much that he spends most of his time attempting to Hester Prime me. Which letter would he choose for me? I guess I would have to peer on the show to know." So clearly a reference to, to me and the I Love Seaville Show on the mayor's page. And, and you know, I was surprised at first that the top leader in the community, I was surprised at first that she was calling out citizens in the community. If you check out the comments, very aggressive attacks on other people she's doing, including Tanisha Hudson, who won a lawsuit against the city when the city failed to allow Tanisha to appear on the city-run Charlottesville 360 broadcast. And then I started thinking and scratching my head, and I'm like, well, this matches the behavior she's done quite often in office. I want to be very clear about something on this talk show where it's documented with cameras, with microphones, and very much on the record. My issue with the mayor is, is, is not the color of her skin. My issue with the mayor is her policies, how she interacts with people, and how she seems to be a lightning rod for dividing the community as opposed to galvanizing and bringing the community together, which from my standpoint, that's the role of the mayor. I see the mayor, maybe you disagree, but I see the mayor of any municipality as an individual, he or she, that champions the city, that puts the city on a pedestal, that shines a spotlight on the city and what the city is doing well. That is the city's most vocal and visible evangelist. The mayor is in a lot of ways, the face of the franchise. The Derek Jeter of the New York Yankees, the Tom Brady of the Patriots, if you may, the Michael Jordan of the Chicago Bulls, the LeBron James of the Los Angeles Lakers, the face of the brand, the face of the franchise. There's a role for activism, and the role for activism, and I, and, and we need activists in our community. We need to be pushed and, and made to feel uncomfortable. And we may, we need to understand where our faults are and hear it from folks who are saying, "This is where the community needs to change and the community needs to get better." Activism is important. In a lot of ways, we do activism on this show. It is important. But the role of an activist is not in the mayor's chair. The mindset of an activist is very different than the mindset of a mayor. The actions of an activist and the commentary and perspective of an activist are very different than the actions, mindset, commentary, and perspective of a mayor. So when the mayor is calling out citizens in the community, you ask yourself, "What are you, what are you doing? Why are you doing this?" That's not leadership. That's division. That's not being the captain of the sports team and the captain saying, "Guys or gals, let's go. Let's work for a common goal. Practice, sweat, come together. We're only as strong as our weakest link. And let's reach that goal." Instead, it's tactics of division. And I'm going to close on this topic and go to the next storyline. And the next storyline is in-person classes at, at UVA in January and what they're going to do for the spring semester. But, but before I do, I want this to be very clear on a microphone in front of cameras on a show that is documented in perpetuity online. My issues and my concerns with Mayor Nakaiel Walker have nothing to do with the color of her skin. My issues with the mayor pertain to policies, her track record on voting for housing, and how she's often saying no to developers because she wants something to be perfect for her model. And instead, developers just choose to build the project by right as opposed to she realizing that even a few affordable housing units create value for the community. So policy, her track record on housing voting, how she interacts with people, and most concerning is how she and what she says of Charlottesville to anyone who's listening. That's my problems. Okay. Give me your perspective. Give me your thoughts. Put it in the comment section. I see them coming in. Our next story is from the University of Virginia. And we now have some clarity of what the spring semester is going to look like. And let's get that on screen, Judah. The spring semester at the University of Virginia is going to look, frankly speaking, very much like the small, the fall semester with a mix of online and in-person classes. The spring semester will begin on February 1, and it will end on May 6 at UVA. Spring break, instead of being five days in a row, each day will be tacked onto a weekend to create a three-day weekend as opposed to a five-day party period where students can go to the beach and potentially bring COVID back to Charlottesville. So spring break chopped up each day from spring break added to a weekend for a three-day weekend. Okay. Once Virginia Tech said that it was going to go in person in the spring, it's pretty clear-cut, all the other public colleges in the Commonwealth will be doing pretty much the same. It's a competition. It's survival of the fittest. And every president at every university in the world has to be asking themselves, "How is COVID-19 going to potentially jeopardize the university or college business model?" Because it clearly is driving momentum behind virtual and digital and online learning. And if virtual and digital and online learning becomes even more ubiquitous or, or the norm, we can potentially predict that in-person, brick-and-mortar, dorms, cafeterias, and all the other profit centers that colleges and universities have built into their business model, profit centers, purchasing textbooks, profit centers, meal plans at cafeterias, profit centers, the cost of a dorm, staying in a dorm at college. These profit centers that are paramount to the success of the business model can potentially be replaced, eroded away, or just frankly cannibalized by digital, online, and virtual learning. So Virginia Tech saying it's going to go in person, in a lot of ways, a lot of presidents and a lot of boards of directors and a lot of people that are leadership at universities and colleges across Virginia said, "You know what? Virginia Tech is going in person." They said it first. We're going to follow suit. And thank goodness, because we need this in-person model to keep our college business model going forward. From a Charlottesville standpoint, we all must realize the value of 25,000 people coming to this community 10 and a half months a year, certainly from an economic standpoint. And UVA, for what it's worth, I frankly, UVA for what it's worth, has done a very good job so far of managing COVID-19. A very good job. Jim Ryan, UVA, has done a very good job of managing COVID-19 so far. So the news, the spring semester, a mix of in-person and online classes with students on grounds learning either in-person or, or through their computers. The next headline I want to relay to you, and Sina McGill is going to join us in about six minutes on the show, comes from in-person classes potentially in January for Charlottesville schools. The school board last night discussed the potential for a return to in-person learning in January. The first kids back would be elementary students. Elementary-age students would be the first ones back. I, if, and I'm choosing my words carefully here because I understand many teachers are hesitant to return back to the classroom. And I stand with the frontline workers. I stand with the teachers because I think they're underpaid and underappreciated. And for what they're doing, shaping the next generation, they should not be underpaid and underappreciated. That being said, if we don't get back to learning in the classroom, very much like the college business model being precarious and potentially in jeopardy, the public school model is, 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 is in a precarious position and potentially in jeopardy. When kids continue, when parents continue to pull their kids out of school, funding for those schools is going to slowly go lower and lower and lower. Remember, funding for schools is based on enrollment. And both Almaral County and the city school systems have seen students being pulled at frequency and rates that we have not seen in a very long time. So getting the kids back in the classroom in some kind of temporary or getting the kids back in the classroom in some kind of abbreviated fashion, maybe it's a couple days a week. I think it's important to getting engagement and enrollment back up in public school systems. I also think our kids are asking, because I see it with, with my, you know, with, with my kid and some of his friends, and he's on the younger end of the spectrum. But I think our kids are ready to be around other kids and learning in person. And if UVA can do it pretty well, I, I'm confident that we can do it pretty well, too. I believe in people. I give a person the benefit of the doubt probably one or two or three too many times. I believe in people, and I believe if we are challenged, we can rise to that challenge and overcome it. And I think we can do this. I know our kids are asking for it. Potential January return for Charlottesville City Schools, school board talking about that last night. Henrico has straight-up said, Henrico School System has straight-up said they're going to go back to in-person classes. It's going to be a phased return with elementary school students returning first, much like the other school systems. Henrico Public Schools will be, students will be allowed back in the classroom beginning November 30. So November 30, the school board decided last night by a 4-1 vote that Henrico County Public Schools students go back to the classroom November 30, if so, a month from now. This will influence other school systems. It's very much a keeping up with the Joneses type situation. The next headline I want to get to you is, is a sizzle reel. And it's a sizzle reel from Real Talk with Keith Smith, Tuesdays and Fridays at 10:15 on the I Love Seaville Network. We had Sean Tevindale on the program, the owner of Blue Ridge Cyclory. We asked Sean about Charlottesville as a bicycle-friendly city. Judah, I'll give you a countdown on that clip. What we need to do, how far we've come, how approachable and bicycle-friendly is the city itself? Well, a guy who owns two bike shops probably is a good resource for an answer like this. Judah, let's hear from Sean. Cue up that clip in three, two, one.
So I sit on the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust, and we worked through a pretty awesome BikePed app. And so how do you feel the city of Charlottesville and the Shrouding County as far as bike paths are doing?
Great question.
How are we doing? Where can we improve? And the reason I'm asking that is I got a meeting next week, and, and I might bring some of this information to them. So from your professional opinion, where can we improve?
Everywhere, honestly, everywhere. We're making big steps. We're making great moves. I think a lot of the debate right now is on what type of bicycle infrastructure do we need? You know, people are like, "Do we need bike lanes that are on the roadways? Do we need separated bike lanes? Do we need clear bike paths? Do we need rail trails? Do we need something that's completely separate from a road that, you know, you can commute on or ride on with the family?" And, and I think that the answer to all of that is yes. I think we need, you know, we need graded road type areas where we can ride that don't have cars. You know, there's, there's railroad areas around that aren't being utilized. If you look, you know, outside of here, outside of the Charlottesville-Almaral area, you know, there's the, the cap-to-cap trail from, you know, Richmond to Williamsburg. They're currently working on doing one of those, as I last heard, somewhere north of, of Richmond, from like Ashland to Fredericksburg or Ashland to, to the DC area. You know, something along those lines. Like, if you talk to somebody and they're like, "Hey, where can I take my kid on, you know, this, this trailer bike to ride?" Right now, it's like, "Oh, there's Riverview Park." You know, that's the only paved pathway that's flat where you can do that sort of thing. You know, the new Bookmark extender, that entire pathway that goes up alongside that is great. You know, you see people biking on it, walking on it, running on it, biking on it all the time. But it's, it's hilly. It's really hilly, like a lot of Charlottesville is. So, you know, from the perspective of what do we need? We need more of everything. You know, we need more bike lanes that are on roads. We need more separated bike lanes from the roadways. You know, the hurdle a lot of times that I encounter with people when I'm talking to them about commuting to work is that they're talking prime time, driving, and trying to ride a bike alongside those cars. It's not uncommon in the city of Charlottesville that you're riding in a bike lane and all of a sudden the bike lane ends. You know, there's a merge sign, which, you know, I think the joke is that, you know, a lot of people see merge as a personal challenge. You try to, you know, aggressively take your position and cars and bikes, thumbs up from Brooklyn, you know, the, the cars and the bikes, you know, the car will win in those circumstances. And I think there's a lot of hesitation for people on, you know, trying to get into commuting of what they can do to make that safer for themselves. And, you know, it's, it's very doable. There are people who are dedicated, dedicated commuters, you know, every single day that they go to work, rain or shine. And it's very doable, but I think that better infrastructure everywhere is for sure needed.
Well, it was truly a fascinating interview with Sean. And I, we, I was really impressed with how he understanding, understood the nuances of what bicycle riding could bring to a community like ours. We also discussed the Rivana Trail. And I asked, "Could the Rivana Trail be that bicycle loop around the community that can get people out of their cars and riding bikes? If we do that, pollution goes down, traffic issues go down, people are healthier, we have less car accidents. So from a safety standpoint, it should be better. Quality of life would uptick." He made this very good point, which I had not considered about the Rivana Trail. The Rivana Trail varies in its surface. Some of it's paved and smooth, some of it's rooted and rocky. Because of that variance in paved surfaces, because of that variance in what the, the ground is like that we're riding it on, it makes it difficult to be that go-to loop because not everybody wants to ride a mountain bike. Regardless, I think we should think about this as a positive. Charlottesville has come so far, and I give it to city leadership, Charlottesville has come so far with making this community bicycle-friendly. We still have a little bit to go, as Sean said, but we've improved dramatically from that standpoint in my 20 years in Charlottesville. And I think we could continue going forward. I love riding my bike around town. I've never not really felt safe riding my bicycle around town. So I want to thank Sean for coming on the program. He was on Real Talk. Real Talk airs Tuesdays and Fridays on the I Love Seaville Network. We're going to now go to Sina McGill, Charlottesville City Councilor. We have her on the line. Councilor McGill, if we can get you to, oh, you did it right there. Thank you. You beat me to it. Councilor Sina McGill, live here in Charlottesville in Central Virginia. How are you doing, Sina? How, what's going on? What's good with you?
Though, you know, we did some virtual schooling and virtual working from the beach for a week, which was good for the family to have a little bit of different four walls. We didn't.
How's your daughter doing? Is she doing well with the virtual learning?
Yes. Yeah, she's actually taking to it really well. You know, there's still some confusion sometimes. And, you know, she's at an age that, there's the like, "Well, I think I finished it." "Yes, Mom, I've done it." And then there's like, "Well, but it's not submitted." But is it submitted? So we've worked out a lot of the kinks. And she's actually doing, I'm lucky, she's doing very well at this.
We still got you there, Sina? You're frozen a little bit. You good there? I got you now.
Okay.
So I want to throw this to you here. Land Trust. So much we want to talk about the Land Trust here. First, Open Ed ed. What's the Land Trust mean to you?
I actually grew up on a Land Trust. So, you know, for me, it's just, it was a way that my single mother could build her home and afford it. And, and it was a way that, I mean, my mom still actually lives on the Land Trust. But it has also kept it, it's kept it very affordable. I mean, it was just like any other house. I mean, it's just, again, it, overall, it's one of those things that, by, it will, it can bring about permanent affordability with homeownership, which is something we've struggled with in Charlottesville. On both a way to keep rent and, and buying affordable for people as time goes on, can create equity and have the benefits of homeownership. And the Land Trust really answers a lot of those issues.
I agree 1,000%. I mean, I love, I'm a huge champion of the Land Trust here. How do you see it working within the current Charlottesville ecosystem, if you may?
I mean, I think it's just going to be another part of the whole picture of what we do to bring affordable housing and the community working together to really look at ways that, you know, it's one piece of it. There's, there's public housing pieces, there's, there's, you know, rent that needs to be, again, the rental market is another fluctuation. But again, you know, if down the road, UVA ends up continuing forward with their village model, we might free up some affordable rentals in Charlottesville again. But again, it's a piece. It's not the answer, but it's part of the whole answer, I think.
When, when you were growing up, did you, you grew up in Nelson, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, Nelson County. So when you were growing up in Nelson and you were growing up on, in, in the Land Trust, Land Trust House, the experience, what was it like? What do you remember? I mean, it was, it was just like a normal house, right? Everyday house, right?
Well, okay. So, so in the seventies, in the early eighties, this were not something most people, I think, I honestly think the one I grew up on is one, was probably one of the first in Virginia. Because about 15 years ago, I talked to somebody and they said there, there were no Land Trusts in Virginia. I was like, um, no, I grew up on one down the road. So it was not a common concept. And this was also an intentional community. So it's kind of hard to pull out the pieces that were the community and the pieces that were the Land Trust. But really, as far as the Land Trust piece went, it was just a normal house. There wasn't any difference. I mean, the community piece was obviously a different because that's, you know, people coming together intentionally to build something. And you had to become a member and all this kind of thing. And it's still there, Shannon Farm out in Nelson County, which I loved growing up on. It was like having 60 aunts and uncles. But, you know, a Land Trust in Charlottesville, that's, I mean, basically, all that is, is that the land is held in trust. So it also holds the appreciation from skyrocketing because that's where the appreciation happens. I mean, but if you go to sell later on, you get the money you've put back. Like, it was instead of, if you're a renter, you don't never get any of your money back. It goes to somebody else's equity. But if you're owning, even if it's just the structure, eventually, if you go to sell it, you're still going to get all the rent you put into, all the mortgage you put into it back out of that value. So plus, there's also appreciation as well. It's just not as much as if you were living on the, if you own the land as well.
Well said. Well said. Councilor McGill, let me throw this to you here. COVID has impacted everything. It's certainly impacting this, the affordability of Charlottesville. We are seeing people from the north with big bags of money after selling their homes in the north come to Charlottesville and, and picking up the little in the north come to Charlottesville and and picking up the little inventory we have here. We're seeing the cost of living go up. COVID-19 from your, uh, your seat and how it's impacting the affordability of this community, Sina.
I mean, I don't think COVID's done anything more than what was already going on. I mean, I remember, I mean, I have friends who I've had down here now since the late eighties who moved here because they saw the ads in New Jersey. I mean, for Lake Monticello, and, I mean, this has been going on for decades. It's just, I mean, I knew people who used to work in DC and commute down here. So people have been buying, you know, retiring in this area or getting out further. I mean, we also had a big, a lot of people after nine 11, people from up north moved down to Charlottesville. It's, it's part of the beauty of the city, but it's also definitely one of the pressures if you've grown up here and want to stay here.
I love it, I love it. A lot of folks watching you right now, just giving you a heads up. You have just about every media outlet watching you on the show as we speak. Uh, we have, we see the reporters here. Um, yeah, you know them all now by name. Um, how about, Sina, how, you know what, when, when you ran, I said many times on the show, if there was one person I would want to grab a beer or a beverage with and just chill with at the bar, it was you. And then you said, Jerry, thank you for saying that, but I don't drink, but I would still chill with you next to you at the bar. How are things going? You're, you're what, uh, 10 months in? How are things going for you?
Well, I mean, I wasn't exactly expecting a pandemic.
I know.
Yes. Um, that, I mean, it's, this is, this is not, I mean, I knew it was going to be difficult. Um, was, could not have anticipated this. I just, I couldn't. The dominoes that have been falling and, you know, every, I do have to say that almost every day there is, there is this serious tension of not wanting to make the most wrong decision. I mean, every night I go to bed worrying about, you know, the choices that we're going to have to be making, about the amount of funds, knowing that we're looking at even more of a deficit than we originally thought, um, worrying about next year's deficit because we're, I actually believe we're going to see more of it. Even if things start coming back some, it's going to take a few years for that to balance out. And that next year's deficit, I am truly worried that it's going to be even worse. Also, I'm incredibly concerned about the amount of people on, at risk foreclosure, at risk of being evicted, um, and, you know, people who have been putting off paying bills when because has been able to, to get that breathing room, but that breathing room still just isn't really happening. Um, I'm worried because we are struck, I know, Pacham has been kind of struggling to reimagine itself to some extent because worry about a lot of the churches that are used for Pacham are much smaller facilities. Um, and we have a lot of the volunteers for Pacham are elderly or older volunteers who are at higher risk. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of worry. I'm worried about, you know, kids and virtual learning. I'm worried about kids going back to school. Um, and I know that my compatriots, both throughout the city and the county, are worrying about the same things every day. Um, I don't think anyone is sleeping well because right now, all we can see is the people who are going to be hurting and potentially hurting worse.
Sina, that was so real. I mean, I appreciate your, like, authenticity there. I mean, I don't even want to talk politics with you. I mean, are you, I feel like through this conversation, I feel the weight of the world that is on your shoulders coming through this computer.
Yes. I mean, I, the problem is, is no one really knows all the right answers right now. No one know, I mean, no one has the answers right now about what we should or shouldn't do because it's not been since 1918 that we had to deal with something like this. And then, I mean, the world was a very different place. You look, or in the 50s, when polio, you know, we're talking about mass vaccinations, well, it's also a very different environment now than it was in the 50s. Um, there's, you know, we don't even know for certain, and, I mean, I'm not trying to do panicking or anything, but we don't even know for certain if we can develop a vaccine for COVID. Um, with people getting reinfected, that is, that's not a good sign for vaccine development. Um, we're, I mean, we don't have a vaccine for HIV. Yeah. And how long has HIV been around? So just because we're looking and we're working on one, and just because, like, we, these resources are going towards something, doesn't mean we have the knowledge for it. And that's something we got to be realistic about. Um, there's always the hope, but I, I do think this is going to have a lot of impact, you know, because also with climate change, I think we're going to be seeing more of this. As, as human populations continue to move into once wild spaces, um, we're either going to be running into diseases we haven't really experienced before, or we're going to be running into mutations of old diseases that have just mutated beyond. Um, yeah, because, you know, bacteria and viruses, those are the true predators now.
Um, I'm mindful of your time here. We told, we, we, we said 15 minutes, we're about 13 in, and I know you're as busy as a person in Charlottesville. Okay, okay. All right, let me throw this to you then here. How about, um, how about a message just to Charlottesville and everybody that's watching from Councilor McGill here? And it's not politics, just a message. You know what one of your best qualities is, is you are so, like, relatable. Like, you have the gift of human connection without question. You're just like, and I'm straight up going to say this, and I'm going to catch some grief here. I think you're the the chillest, most laid-back of the five. And, and I think that's why people like you. People like you because of that. How about a message just to everybody that's watching into Charlottesville, Sina? Are you getting emotional over there? I, I'm getting emotional.
I, you know, this makes me emotional. I care about people. I really, I mean, this is why I worked in mental health, this is why I worked in homelessness because, you know, I, I, this is why I decided to run for office is because I truly care people. There's no other reason that I'm doing this. Um, believe me, I would love to just, like, quit and put my head in the sand and say, just deal with my own family and my own, you know, survival right now, instead of trying to help the best, find some of the best paths forward. Um, I just, you know, um, I just want people to know that I do have faith that, that myself and the other counselors and, and our city staff truly care about this city and the people in the city. And I just hope that everyone continues to stay safe and please wear masks and please, please continue to treat this as a pandemic and don't think that it's just over just because it's been going on for so long.
Well, I appreciate you. Thank you for offering some commentary on the Land Trust. We love the Land Trust. You are, uh, it's crazy, you're, you're 10 months in. You're 10 months in.
Yeah. And I have had two months of in-person.
The 10 months feel, are they, the 10 months like 10 years? You have a good weekend. Um, I sincerely meant everything I said. You have a good weekend. Thank you for your time. Um, we believe in you. We're counting on you. We need you.
Take care, everybody. And take care.
You too, Sina. Um, Sina McGill, Charlottesville City Councilor, right there. Thank you for joining us on the program. Um, I, I do sincerely mean this. Her background as a counselor makes, has given her the foundation to be extremely approachable and able to connect with people. And it's like one of her best assets, I think, as a human being. She's the type of person, and we all know people like this, she's the type of person that can pretty much find a human connection with everybody. And not everyone has that ability, and that is truly a gift. And that's a gift that you can refine, and that's a gift that you can strengthen. And one of the ways you do that is to be around people in various different stages of their life, and you certainly see that as a, as a counselor. Um, so thank you, Sina McGill, for joining us on the program. We're truly grateful for your time on today's show. Give the show a like and a share, give the, on any of the social media platforms you're watching. If you're listening as a podcast on iTunes, Spotify, and Apple Podcasts, welcome to the show. Thank you kindly for joining us. Judah, some headlines I want to get to, if you could. Uh, the next headline I want to get to on the program before we get to your comments. And look, there's a number of comments that are coming in here. A lot of those comments have, um, a lot to do with what the mayor had to say about me on her Facebook page this morning. We will get to those in moments. Before we do, let's talk football quickly. We have the University of Virginia at Miami Saturday. It's an eight o'clock kick. The Hurricanes, a 12 and a half point favorite, 12 and a half point favorite for the Miami Hurricanes. You have 19 Virginia Tech, Judah, and number 19 Virginia Tech is a nine and a half point favorite there at Wake Forest, 3:30 Saturday. You got two teams going in two different directions. You got Virginia Tech heading in the right way. You got the University of Virginia heading in the wrong way. Virginia's got back-to-back, um, games with ranked opponents, Miami, and then next weekend, North Carolina, and then they follow it up against Louisville. There's a very good chance that UVA is going to be 1-5 going into that Louisville matchup. And there's a very good chance that Virginia Tech's going to bang out victories in their next two outings. The Hokies got a pretty darn good football team, okay? Virginia Tech has a pretty darn good football team, and I, and I thoroughly expect them to cover the nine and a half. I think it opened on Monday at seven. In fact, yes, it did open on Monday at seven. We'll follow 19 Virginia Tech closely as they try to make a push for a potential ACC championship. Clemson looks unstoppable, but after Clemson, Miami, North Carolina, Virginia Tech, I mean, all, Notre Dame, all those teams in that category can make something happen on any given Saturday. And quickly, Dallas at Washington, Cowboys a one-point favorite over the Washington Football Team, one o'clock on Fox. Judah, I want to preview Monday's show before we talk basketball. Entrepreneur Mercy Best will join us on Monday's program. She's creating science, technology, technology, engineering, and math kits, her business. And these kits are helping students of all backgrounds, of all demographics, learn science, technology, engineering, and math a little bit easier. I think these kits are even more important now during this COVID landscape we're in, where people are learning virtually and don't have that in-person instruction with teachers. So I want to spotlight an entrepreneur in the education space on Monday's program. We'll get to your comments here in a matter of moments before we talk basketball. Um, Andre Xavier's watching the program. Andre, we love when you watch the show. He said, uh, the mayor, he said, Mayor Walker sounds desperate. She knows she is not being reelected. Why he's offering this, um, commentary is because of a Facebook post she did this morning. If you want to get that back on screen for those who are just turning into the program now, that post is tied to this program and this show. You, uh, I've already given my respectful commentary on that, so I'm going to leave it at that. I see a number of comments that are coming in because of this Facebook post she did. Kevin Higgins has this to say. What are the evidence-based outcomes that are used to determine if the mayor has made the city better from where she found it? Things like finances, networks, and infrastructure. You know, I, I respect that comment, Kevin. I think the unfortunate aspect of tangible production and using tangible production to determine or grade how someone has done at their job, the tough part is, we're, we're in a pandemic. So the finances, the, the networks, the infrastructure that you mentioned, while those are generally strong barometers of performance, certainly in the for-profit world, which I'm in, when you're a public servant or you're an elected official, and you're a public servant and an elected official during a pandemic, a lot of those barometers that scale from year to year that we use to determine performance, unfortunately, we have to throw those out the window. We just had Councilor McGill on the program. I, I really respected her vulnerability, the vulnerability that she showed there, and she said, we're in a pandemic. No one has a path for success here because we haven't lived this since the Spanish Flu, which, which I believe was in 1918. She even highlighted that the budget for next year, next fiscal year, is going to be potentially worse than the budget for current fiscal year. And, and I, I hate to admit this, but I, I think she's, I think she's right. My concern is this money's going to have to be made up some way. How is the money going to be made up? My concern is the money's going to be made up from taxing real estate and from homeowners. And my concern is if the money comes from homeowners, um, it's going to make the path to homeownership even less accessible or approachable. Basically, it's going to make the community less affordable. If we raise the overhead that is homeownership and increasing the taxes or the assessed values on these properties is raising the overhead, it's making it less approachable to own a house. If that happens, then the community is going to become more, and I'll cut to the chase, more, it's going to be more of a wealthy community. It's going to be less diverse of a community. It's more, it's going to be, it's going to highlight more of the income disparity that's in the community. And because of that, we need the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust. The Land Trust, from what I see, and this is important for me to emphasize to you, the Land Trust, from what I see, from my vantage point, is the best path to affordability in Charlottesville, Virginia. I'll say it again. The Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust is the best solution from my standpoint to creating affordability and affordable housing in and around Charlottesville, Virginia. I just don't see outside of, outside of UVA getting into the housing game and UVA becoming a massive landlord, and then UVA saying to its employees, as a perk of working at the university, you can either rent from us, or UVA becoming a Land Trust itself. Outside of that, I don't see a more clear path to affordability in Charlottesville than the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust. Now, if UVA goes in and says, with the $10 billion with a B endowment, and UVA says, we're going to start buying up housing ourselves, and we'll run a Land Trust model, or we'll do the rental model where our, our employees can, can rent from us or, or buy from us, then that changes the game. But let's cut to the chase. UVA is not going to do that. That's not the business they're in. So the Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust is the best solution. Um, college basketball about to start. The Wahoos, I think their basketball team's going to be pretty darn good. Um, it's going to be a pretty darn good team. I know we're losing some talent, but I think this team is going to be pretty darn good. I'm very excited to see the Marquette transfer play on the hardwood for Tony Bennett. And I think after this football season, where the Wahoo football team clearly is, is not going to be very good, and, and we don't even know what's going on with, with the quarterback Armstrong and where he stands in the concussion protocol, and the three-headed monster that is the alternative option under center, that's a, a, that's a scary proposition. Because that three-headed monster is far from perfect and far from ACC caliber. So I want to see Tony's team, Tony's team's going to get going, um, right around Thanksgiving. I want to see what the, the ACC Big Ten Challenge is still happening this year. I want to see this basketball. I'm a huge fan of Clark. Kier Clark's the man, a huge fan of Clark. I think this team's going to offer us some promise, and in the winter, winter is coming, and in the winter, where we're going to be hunkering down even more, I think we're going to enjoy watching Tony Bennett's basketball team, you know, play some basketball. I truly mean that. We'll give some love to Ting, Judah. $288 in savings through iloveseville.ting.com, the best internet out there. Vanessa Parkhill, I completely agree with this comment, this comment from Vanessa Parkhill, who, who watches this program often. In fact, she's recommended people as interviewees for the show, and we've had them on the show because we trust her judgment. Vanessa Parkhill says, government needs to tighten its belt, just like its citizens do when their income is reduced. No raising taxes. I, I agree, Vanessa. I, I think, however, it's going to happen. I think that's going to happen. I think that's going to happen. Susan Steymart, Executive Director of the Community Land Trust, Thomas Jefferson Community Land Trust, says, the Land Trust creates long-term affordability. Amen, Susan Steymart. A lot of folks watching across social media and listening on iTunes, Spotify, and Apple Podcasts as we speak. Keith Smith says, aren't you Cuban, Jerry? I am, I am. For those that don't know that, my mother is 100% Cuban, was born in Cuba, and then in the third grade, Mima and Poppy, my grandparents, who have since passed away, moved my mom, who was a single, an only child, and my mom, Mima, and Poppy, right before Castro took over and was implementing his communist regime, and my grandmother was actively involved in politics and, and, and local government in Cuba. So she was very much, from a safety standpoint, in jeopardy, because Castro, as he was taking over in, what, 5960? My history's a little, little hazy, it should not be. But Mima, Poppy, and my mother, they left Cuba for Miami, Florida, where they went from a middle-class life in Cuba to very much a working-class life in Miami. Mima, a hotel maid, Poppy, a ditch digger and a barber. My mom put into the third grade, when she arrived to Florida in Miami, not being able to speak English, only Spanish, yet her only choice for an education standpoint was an English-speaking school. And my mom, to this day, brings up the memories she has of third grade, when she was put into an English-speaking school as a Cuban who only spoke Spanish, and she said she was ridiculed mercilessly by the students of this school. And to this day, when she brings this up and reflects on these memories, she gets emotional about her experience in the third grade, because while she could not understand the taunts or, or, or the ridicule that was coming at her, any kid, regardless of understanding the language, is aware that they're being made fun of. I mean, I'll tell you what, kids can be quite mean, quite mean at times. And when she thinks about that, she gets emotional. So thank you for bringing that up, Keith. Yes, my mom, and I'm very proud of this. I'm very proud of my heritage. Did you know that Mima and Poppy, they moved from Cuba, these are my grandparents, from Cuba to Florida to get away from Fidel Castro, for fear of their safety, for fear of being murdered? That's legitimately true. When they moved to Florida, and Mima was a maid at a hotel, and Poppy was a ditch digger for the city, a barber, and also worked other odd jobs. Neither learned English, so it really impacted their ability to get jobs in the 50s, 60s, 70s, and beyond in America. But did you know that when Mima and Poppy died, this is a, just truly, it gives me goosebumps today. Did you know that when Mima and Poppy died, they left my brother and I, this was their life savings, their life savings, $20,000 when they died? And they left $10,000 for me and $10,000 for my brother. And we only could get the money if it was utilized for college tuition. That's how important to Mima and Poppy it was for my brother and I to get a college, get college tuition and go to college. Because they saw themselves the fact that they didn't have, go to college, and how it was impacting them. So I'm proud, I'm extremely proud to be the son of a, of a Cuban immigrant. I'm extremely proud. I, my, my mother is the strongest woman I know. To go from Cuba, to be told by your parents, put everything that you can, that means some, put everything that has value to you in one backpack, and that's all you're going to carry with you when we leave our home and the life you've known up until the third grade, and we're going to move to this other country that we've never been to, to a place we've never visited, we're going to shack up with some extended family until we get some jobs and until we get on our feet, and you're going to go to this English-speaking school, and you're going to figure out this language in the third grade despite never getting exposure to it? And my mom, now 70 years old, I mean, she is the strongest woman, she is the strongest human, the strongest human I know is my mother. I sincerely mean that. And I'm proud to be a Cuban-American, proud, proud of Mima and Poppy. That's why I just, and I'm just going to, that's why it irritates me so much, the weaponizing of race, which is undoubtedly what the mayor is doing. She's weaponizing racism and utilizing this weapon when something is not playing out how she wants it to play out. That creates division and not unity. And I bring it up here because I know we have the largest reach of anyone in this community. And I know the influence and responsibility that comes with a reach like we have. To, to say that it's about skin color is just out of touch, insulting, disrespectful, and a cause for concern for every citizen in Charlottesville and all of us in central Virginia, because central Virginia goes as the city of Charlottesville goes. Think about that. We need, especially during a pandemic that the world's never seen, we need leadership that does what Sina did today, Counselor McGill. And she showed vulnerability, and she said, this is hard. I'm not sleeping. I think about these decisions constantly. This is weighing on me, because I understand the decisions I make affect everyone. That's leadership. Not putting people down, not calling people who grew up in the area, and Bellamy Brown, who's a Marine Corps veteran, a class act, and the definition of a role model, not calling him toxic S-H-I-T. I just, I don't understand the behavior. I just don't understand her behavior. All right, I got to get out of here. I got a Friday afternoon that's quite busy. You guys have a good one. I'm grateful for you watching the show. It's the I Love Seaville Show, Monday through Friday, 12:30. Where, thanks to you guys, and I'm truly grateful, we've become the most watched and listened to platform in central Virginia, and it's by a long shot. Keep it local this weekend, be safe, wear your mask, social distance, but do it in a way where you're supporting the community. Guys, the community needs it. You can do this, we can do this. I know we can come together. I know Charlottesville can come together, can rally together, all of us. And I know we can pull on the other side of this situation and be stronger than ever. I know we can do this. I believe in us. I'm Jerry Miller. It's the I Love Seaville Show.